I will declare the meeting open, we're all good to go. We have councillor Rendell's. Thank you, so I'll declare the meeting open at 9:30am on this rainy Wednesday, the 20th of November. Good morning councillors and our visitors in the chamber and those out in the other room listening and working. I would like to acknowledge the Kwanamouka people who are the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today and pay respect to their elders, past, present, and extend that respect to any Indigenous people who are present in the meeting today and to all elders in our community. Housekeeping matters and I know you've heard this all before but I would like to remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded in audio and video as well as being livestreamed online for the community. Councillors are reminded that parliamentary privilege does not extend to this chamber as it does for state and federal parliamentarians and you are reminded to be cognizant of this and while making any comments which you may make during the course of this meeting. I would like to remind all our councillors to use your microphone when speaking and for any councillors or officers who are attending virtually, please use the mute button when you are not speaking. In the event of an evacuation, I would ask that everyone remain calm, follow directions and take the emergency exit through the gallery doors, down on the right there, straight out the stairwell and on to Bloomfield Street, my right, your left. Public conduct during the meeting, and I don't think we need too much instruction on that, all members of the public present at the meeting must, not without a prior approval of the chairperson, make any audio/video recordings or take any photographs, remain quiet and not disrupt the meeting in any way, not bring into the meeting any signs, placards or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with any person present, be suitably dressed and turn all mobile devices to silent mode and leave the meeting to take any phone calls. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to warn a member of the public present at a meeting who is not complying with any of these requirements and may, with or without such warning, require that person to leave the meeting and not return for such period as I decide. This may include future meetings. So councillors, if we can move on to point two of our agenda which is leaves of absence and I will just start with councillor Hewlett as he is online. So I would like a mover and a seconder please for a motion to grant councillor Hewlett permission to participate in the meeting via teleconference. Moved councillor Bishop, seconded councillor Coley. I put the motion, those in favour. That is carried unanimously with councillor Hewlett and mayor Mitchell out of the room. You there now councillor Hewlett?
Yes, thank you deputy mayor.
Thank you, you can now vote on all future motions from here.
Thank you.
Now I would bring your attention to a requirement for a mover and a seconder to grant a leave of absence to mayor Mitchell who is on leave of absence and not able to be present in the meeting today. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Moved councillor Bishop, seconded councillor Mitchell, those in favour?
Aye.
That's carried unanimously with councillor Mayor councillor Mitchell out of the room. Ah, thank you. I am online now. I will take a moment to remind you all to sign your attendance sheet please councillors and I have to try to remember also to do that. I would now like to move on to our devotional segment and I will invite pastor Mariska Dupree from C3 Church at Redland Bay to lead council in a brief devotional segment. Morning.
Good morning everyone, thank you for your time this morning, it's always an honour to speak and share with you this morning. So we're heading into Christmas, we know it's normally a time when we are winding down and trying to wrap up everything although businesses and institutes start ramping up because it's a time where we try and cram in as much as we can to finish the year without anything in the background. I bring this to your attention because it's also a time of the year where we disregard our emotional health and that's what I want to share on a little bit this morning, we neglect our emotional health and if we do that, we sometimes get to a point where we so overwhelmed emotionally or some of us even have emotional breakdowns. All of us were created with emotions, they are given to us as indicators. Emotions are great servants but they are terrible masters. That means that when our emotions get given to us and we act on them, we are not to have them rule us, they're indicators of what's going on inside of us and we should pay attention to it but we should never let them rule us. To Timothy, verse one to seven, it says, 'For God has not given us a spirit of fear but of power, of love and a sound mind.' It says in John 14 as well, 'Peace I live with you, my peace I give to you, not as the world gives to, do I give. Let not your heart be troubled, neither let it be afraid.' So this morning I just want to leave you with this, don't ignore your emotions, pay attention to the indicators but do not let them overwhelm or dictate you. Let's finish this year emotionally healthy and strong, knowing that we are empowered to have love and a sound mind and to have peace and not be troubled. I would like to pray for you now. Lord, we just thank you Lord God that we are people that have emotions Lord God but that we don't get ruled by them. Lord God, I just pray for every single one present Lord God and not in the room this morning, Lord God, help us to have a sound mind, help us to be in charge of our emotions and help us to finish this year strong emotionally Lord God and be able to make those decisions and do those things you need us to do to end this year well, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen, thanks so much.
Thank you pastor. Thank you everyone, moving on to our recognition of achievement and I believe councillor Mitchell would like to present a recognition of achievement today.
Yes, thank you, thank you chair and very much so today. The inaugural Redlands Coast Sporting Hall of Fame and sporting awards were presented just Saturday night, 16th of November, at the Victoria Point Sharks Sporting Club. There was over 150 people in the room, a black tie event, so dressed up to the nines. It was a very exciting inaugural event. I'd like to recognise first up the thought leader and chairperson of the committee, Mr Pat Carroll, who I've known for quite some time. He's a resident of Alex Hills and has had this vision of a sporting hall of fame for, I've been saying 20 years, it's probably 25 or 30 years now and he hasn't let it go and I'm so pleased he hasn't. The achievement to bring this event and the awards to life alongside his committee was supported by a range of community stakeholders and they're from the areas of sport, from local business, I'd like to acknowledge Redlands City Council were very supportive and officers were involved although not on committee. And also a range of elected officials, some of who are in this room have been very supportive but across government. It really was a true example of collaboration and cooperation and the sort of innovation that makes our city great and one that we should all be very proud of. It was fantastic to, well I believe it's witnessed history in the making as this will almost certainly become an important part of the Redlands Coast legacy and of our cultural and sporting history. Most importantly perhaps, I want to recognise the winners, the initial cohort of winners from the Redlands Coast Sport Hall of Fame and annual sports awards. Into the Hall of Fame were inaugurated Alicia Coots and Ashley Callis, both Olympians who were certainly household names back in the day and I think probably still are, too many of us, incredible people and athletes. So they were our first two inductees and lead that cohort into history, very worthy winners. Also making history for recognition in the annual sports awards for 2024 were, and I'll read them out, Volunteer of the Year, Eliza Morris of the Point Lookout Surf Life Saving Club, Administrator of the Year, Kylie Preo of Redlands Rugby League, Official of the Year, Matt Lavery, Redlands Touch Association, Organisation of the Year and backing up with Point Lookout Surf Life Saving Club, Coach of the Year, Phil Cars of the Victoria Point Sharks, Emerging Athlete, watch this name into the future, Hudson Brown, Trampolining, Redlands City Gym Sports, Sportswoman of the Year, Kimberly Sucey, Redlands Touch Association and Sportsman of the Year, Carl Lovett, well known to this chamber, also of the Point Lookout Surf Life Saving Club. Probably extra little bit of kudos to Point Lookout with three winners in there, so pretty incredible. But a great range of organisations and sports there which I think is testament to the quality and the number of applications in the first year. So please go to the Hall of Fame Facebook page or the website to see the background information to all of those individual achievements, all of which we could recognise in this section individually but we won't be today. Congratulations again to Pat Carroll and to the Redlands Coast Sports Hall of Fame Committee for this gift to the Redlands and again to all the winners, thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell, I'm not aware of any other recognitions of achievement? Oh, apology, oh sorry, yes councillor Coley, would you like to give your recognition of achievement, thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor. Today I would like to acknowledge Redlands City Council's outgoing executive group manager, people, culture and organisational performance, Amanda Daly, who finishes up with council next month after 29 years of service. Amanda has been an incredible leader here and leaves our people and culture team in great shape and well prepared to deliver the safety, people and culture and corporate strategy and transformation at council now and into the future. She has also been an important member of our executive leadership team for several years. Amanda commenced with what was Redlands Shire council at the time in June 1995 as a level one clerical officer in water supply on a temporary five-month contract before becoming a permanent full-time employee as a level one clerical officer from September 1995. In May 1996, she commenced as a customer service officer trainee for three months with the CEO approving for Amanda to receive full pay as a level two despite being under 21, later progressing to level three after her traineeship was completed in August of 1996. She took opportunities to perform higher duties as team leader customer services until securing the permanent position in April 2000. September 2012, she successfully secured the position of customer service manager with her application notably huge and filled with paper references and certificates, one of which was a testament to her typing prowess. In April 2006, Amanda began her journey in the human resources world when she was seconded to HR as a senior workplace relations advisor. She became the principal advisor employee relations in December 2006 and acted in higher duties as HR manager on several occasions. Amanda was successfully appointed in the group manager people and change role in March 2010. Amanda has seen many changes over the time she has been in her current role with a change in reporting lines from general manager corporate services to the CEO from April 2013. The name of the group she now leads has changed over the years from human resources to people and change, back to human resources, to people and culture and finally to people, culture and organisational performance. Her current portfolio includes the people and culture, strategy and transformation and safety and psychosocial health streams. Our acting CEO Louise Roussin has summed up the profound impact she has had here by saying, 'Amanda has been instrumental in leading and embedding a positive culture that prioritises our employees and our customers, that looks for better ways of working and that keeps us safe.' It's a shame Amanda's not here today but Amanda, we all thank you for your service to council staff, to the organisation and to the community more broadly. You leave a great legacy and will be missed.
Thank you councillor Coley and if I can just add, on speaking at the local government conference with a former CEO and former DG and member of government services for decades, noted to me that Amanda Daly was the best HR manager he had ever worked with across two levels of government and 30, 40 years of service, so she will be missed, thank you. Now councillors, we will move on to receipt and confirmation of minutes. Can I now have a mover and seconder to confirm the minutes of the general meeting of the 16th of October please? Moved councillor Rendell's, seconded councillor Mackenzie. Are there any points of change? All good, nothing? Okay, thank you, those in favour?
Aye.
Approved unanimously with the mayor absent. Do I need to note the mayor absent when she's been given an approval of absence? Okay. And now councillors, we have a second lot of minutes, if we could, we need to confirm the minutes of the special meeting held on the 14th of November. Can I have a mover and a seconder for those minutes please? Moved councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Mackenzie. Any points, all those in favour? That is confirmed unanimously with mayor Mitchell out of the room. Councillors, I'm not aware of any need to declare conflict of interest but I'll take this moment to remind you all of your responsibilities in relation to prescribed conflict of interest and declarable conflicts of interest at meetings and please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at statutory meeting of council. If you have any declaration to make, you can make that at any time during the meeting or now if there's anything that you would like to raise, I think, okay. We move on now to matters outstanding from previous general meetings and I will hand over to our acting chief executive officer for any comments you'd like to make.
Thank you deputy mayor and good morning everybody. There are four items that are outstanding from previous general meetings. The first item is 7.1, the draft Birkdale Community Precinct Local Government Infrastructure Designation Consultation Report, a report will come to a future meeting of council. Item 7.2 is council's programmes related to Environmental Protection and Biodiversity Act, a response to a notice of motion and a report will be brought to a future meeting of council. Item 7.3 is the expenses reimbursement provision of facilities for councillors policy. Officers have advised that the review of the vehicle options has been completed, however there are some minor amendments to other parts of the policy that have been identified and a report will be brought back to the general meeting on the 18th of December 2024. The final item is 7.4, indoor sports facilities planning and a report will be brought to a future meeting of council. Thank you deputy mayor.
Thank you. Okay councillors, moving on, sorry I was a little distracted by 7.2. We have no merrill minutes that I am aware of, we have no mayor so that would tally. We do have now to move on to public participation. So in accordance with item 6.10, council meeting standing orders, we only have one speaker that I'm aware of, so don't believe we need 15 minutes, six or seven minutes should be ample, to make available by resolution a time to permit members of the public gallery to address the government on matters of interest relating to the local government. We have just one resident who would like to speak today, so can I have a motion to suspend standing orders? A mover and a seconder, the meeting standing orders be suspended for a period of eight minutes to allow that public participation on matters of public interest to the council. Mover and seconder, moved councillor Bishop, seconded councillor Gole, all those in favour?
Aye.
That's carried unanimously with mayor Mitchell out of the room. So if I can now ask our speaker. So in relation to speaking, I would like first to note that you have, may have noticed the signage in the chambers regarding public participation at meetings, it is council's usual practice to require any person wishing to address the meeting to state their name and the suburb or organisation that they represent and the subject they wish to speak about. This information is recorded in the minutes of the meeting which is a public document available... document available for inspection at council's administration building and is published on our website. I also advise that the meeting is being livestreamed and that by speaking today, you acknowledge and agree that this meeting can be seen live and recorded. Any person who addresses the meeting needs to state their name and suburb or organisation they represent and the subject they wish to speak about, stand unless unable to do so, act and speak with decorum, be respectful and courteous, make no comments directed at any individual council employee, councillor or member of the public, ensuring that all comments relate to council as a whole. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to ensure that these standing orders are adhered to. Those members of the public who have approval through application to speak, I don't think we need to go through all of this, and I have the ability to withdraw that approval at any point during the meeting. I would note that each speaker based, each speaker has a maximum of five minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers, and as we've noted, we only have one speaker today. I'd now ask Mr Damon Kendrick, resident of Carigara Island, to come forward to the podium. State your name, the reason you're here to address this, and go.
My name is Damon Kendrick. I'm from Carigara.
Sorry, Mr Kendrick.
Thank you. My name is Damon Kendrick. I'm from Carigara Island and I speak on behalf of the LGBTQIA+ community. I'd like to, with your permission, request the council fly the rainbow flag on 17th of May and for Pride Month, which is June of 2025, and perhaps, with your permission, going forward in other years. May the 17th is Idah Hobbit Day, International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia, Intersexism and Transphobia, and represents the day that the World Health Organisation removed homosexuality from the, as a psychiatric illness, from the diagnostic and statistical manual which records diseases. Flying of the flag at council premises will send a clear message to vulnerable members of the community that they are valid human beings who deserve the continued protection of their human rights. Some say that the marriage equality that was passed in December 2017 represents or was indicative of societal improvement and the absence of discrimination, but unfortunately discrimination still occurs. And I'd like to, if I may, just record some of the issues that face the LGBTQIA+ community. For brevity, I'll say LGBT. Stigma, victimisation, abuse and microaggressions are issues to LGBT physical and mental health. Homophobic stigma includes bullying, gratuitous humour, pejorative epithets, comments about religious freedom to discriminate against same-sex marriage and any private or public statement of societal or religious disapproval of homosexuality. Microaggression refers to subtle forms of discrimination which may individually appear to an outsider's trivial but have a cumulative negative effect. Homosexuality was a capital offence in Australia until 1949 and was only decriminalised between 1975 and 1997, depending on the state. So many people for that period carried criminal convictions, which were only expunged in 2018. 68% of LGBT people are not out to their colleagues. They do not make their status open to colleagues. Two-thirds of LGBT youth experience abuse due to their identity and two-thirds of homeless youth identify as LGBT. 35% of LGBT Australians have experienced verbal abuse in the last year and 80% of gay men report verbal abuse and 33% report childhood physical abuse compared to 12% of heterosexual men. Sexual abuse occurs in 14% to 20% of gay men compared to 2% of heterosexual men. Gay men have a 21% incidence of being beaten up in any situation compared to 12% of heterosexual men. And 28% of gay men are mugged in the street versus 16% of heterosexuals. Social isolation is an important issue for older LGBT people and an Australian-wide survey found 20.8% of bisexual people, 33.7% of lesbian and gay people reporting homelessness compared to 13.4% of their heterosexual peers.
Mr Kendrick, I'll just let you know you've got one minute left on your dress.
Mental health is an issue, including PTSD, and 10% of all gay males have attempted suicide compared to 2% of heterosexual men. Physical problems that are completely separate from sexually transmitted illnesses include high incidences of asthma, high incidence of cardiovascular disease, higher incidence of cancers including Hodgkin's disease and non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. So I think I've made the point that the LGBT community is very vulnerable and flying the flag will make a difference to many people's lives. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr Kendrick. Sorry, turned it off when I thought I turned it on. Now need a motion to close the public participation segment and resume our standing orders for the meeting. I'll have a mover in councillor Mitchell and a seconder in councillor Coley. All those in favour?
Aye.
That's unanimous with councillor Mitchell out of the room. Mayor Mitchell out of the room. We now move on to a presentation of petitions. And whilst councillor Hewlett is in the meeting, he has asked councillors present in the room for ease of communication to present some petitions on his behalf. So I'll first ask councillor Gole to present a petition relevant to Victoria Point on behalf of councillor Hewlett.
Thank you, deputy mayor. This petition, yes, I am presenting on behalf of councillor Hewlett. It's a petition from residents requesting an off-leash dog beach in Victoria Point and to establish a designated off-leash beach for dogs in Victoria Point under the position of every coastal city provides an off-leash beach for dogs to swim and run freely. This would also have a positive impact on the wellbeing of countless owners and their dogs. The petition is of an operational nature and be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gole. And now if I, oh, sorry, I do need a seconder for that. Councillor Bishop and all those in favour?
Aye.
That's passed unanimously with mayor Mitchell out of the room. If I can now ask councillor Rendells to present a petition?
This petition is presented on behalf of councillor Lance Hewlett. It's a petition from residents of Koochimudlow Island requesting council reverse the full cost recovery policy for Moreton Bay marine facilities. The residents of Koochimudlow Island respectfully request the council to reverse its decision to levy landing fees on jetties and landing facilities for Moreton Bay Islands. These fees, under the council's full cost recovery policy, unfairly burdened island residents who are simply trying to access their homes. A jetty is essentially a marine bus terminal and a barge ramp is no different from a road access point to reach another road on the island. The council's full cost recovery policy aims to follow the user pay principle, but a key aspect was overlooked. Three elements must be considered. One, identify a special benefit for a privileged group. There is no special benefit. Jetties and barge ramps are like bus terminals and roads, which mainland residents use without targeted fees. Two, identify the costs of the benefit. This can be done via financial systems. Three, identify recipients of the benefit. Easily done. Koochimudlow has two facilities and Simbi has five. Unlike mainland residents, island residents face a targeted levy for basic transport facilities, which is discriminatory. Although fees are positioned as levies on operators, these costs are passed to residents through ticket sales, resulting in additional charges on top of their rates. Currently, Koochimudlow residents pay the equivalent of $500 per household, while Simbi residents pay $150, creating an imbalance between the burden on different island communities on the basis of population size. This approach is unjust and we urge the council to reconsider the levies imposed on island access. I would move that the petition be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration and a report to the local government.
Thank you, councillor Rendells. Can I have a seconder for that, please? Councillor Coley seconded. And all those in favour? That is passed unanimously with mayor Mitchell out of the room. Now have a petition for councillor Mitchell. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Have a petition from residents across Redlands but also some other local government areas. The petition states that the undersigned would like to see improved accountability to the community by implementing an online register, petition register, which includes details of all paper and online petitions lodged with council. The register should include details of the petition date, request date when the petition was accepted and the number of people who signed the petition. The register should also include the council's response to the petition and the date when this was advised to petitioners. The register should commence 1 January 2024. Where petitions are referred to the CEO to be dealt with as an operational matter, council's standing orders should require the CEO to respond within 30 days of the petition being accepted. Where petitions are to be the subject of a report back to council, then the response should be published within 15 days of the matter being dealt with at a council meeting. I propose the petition is of an operational nature and be received and referred to the CEO for consideration.
Thank you, councillor Mitchell. Can I have a seconder for that? Councillor Bishop, all those in favour? That is passed unanimously with mayor Mitchell out of the room. Oh, councillor Hewlett, you're in favour?
Aye.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any other presentations. Right. We don't have any motion to alter the order of business that I'm aware of. There are no reports from the office of the CEO. So we move on to agenda items 13, reports from organisational services. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the October 24 monthly financial report? Moved councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Boglari. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Mitchell?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I would actually like to ask a question through the chair to the report authorising officer. And it was, I apologize, I hadn't asked this previously. I was just interested in the executive summary. The report mentions that there were higher than budgeted depreciation. And I was just curious that with known asset base, whether how the depreciation might fluctuate to higher or lower on any given month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, Chair, with the variance to budget with depreciation, we had our evaluations which were being undertaken for road and other infrastructure assets and as they were being finalised late in the financial year, our budget forecasting for depreciation did take place in April, May. So at the time of that forecast for what depreciation would be for this financial year, we didn't have the final values for the road and other infrastructure charges. So that's why there's a variance where we're showing it's higher than what we anticipated that it would be and something that we would look to take to a budget review if needed.
Anything further, councillor Mitchell?
No, not from mine. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take that as a speaker for. Do we have any speakers against? No? With that, I'll put the motion. So you have a question? Oh, yeah, certainly. Councillor Boglari.
Through the chair, also to the CFO, along the lines of what councillor Mitchell said, could you just clarify again on that page 28 about there is higher than budgeted depreciation, lower than budgeted levies, and also about the cash balances up higher than normal? Because it's all to do with timing, I'm understanding. But it just doesn't read like that, unfortunately.
Thank you. And through you, Chair. So as I mentioned, the, it was the timing of getting the final asset valuations for the roads and other infrastructure assets that we didn't have in time when we're doing the budget forecast for those assets for depreciation. And it's something we'd look to see whether we need to address through a budget review. The levies and utility charges, that's the ongoing impact that we've seen from the first quarter of the water levies and charges. So that's continuing to come through. And the timing of the cash, which I do note in the highlighted table of a variance of negative 10%, that's purely when we, again, it's a timing thing. We forecast ahead of time when we actually expect to make cash payments for our accounts payable and when we actually anticipate we're going to receive cash incoming from our receivables. And that's why there's that variance to the budget.
Thank you. Councillor Bishop, do you indicate you had a question? No? Okay. Thank you. With that, we're happy to move on, councillors. Can I have all those in favour, please? Oh, sorry, did you want to say?
Aye.
No, quite comfortable. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillors, just one more. And I've got councillor Hewlett's. All those in favour? Right, that's carried unanimously with mayor Mitchell out of the room. Moving on to 13.2, the Audit and Risk Committee Chairperson's annual report. Can I have a mover and seconder for that? Councillor Boglari moved, seconded councillor Hughes. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Boglari?
Yes, thank you. The ARMC supports council's corporate governance responsibilities and the purpose of this report here today is to provide an overview of these audit and risk management committees' responsibilities, activities and key deliberations for the previous financial year. The ARMC supports council's corporate governance as mandated by the Local Government Act 2009 by providing independence oversight of financial and risk management frameworks. The ARMC's responsibilities are outlined in its charter, are also outlined in the report, and they include ensuring the accuracy of financial statements, collaborating with external auditors, overseeing internal audits, evaluating internal controls, reviewing fraud prevention measures, assessing risk management frameworks and ensuring compliance with legislation. So you can see that our meetings are very interesting and informative. There has been detailed discussions between the members of the committee, which has informed the table below. And they include, if you go on page four of six, it talks about the following, the committee reviewed and approved annual internal audit plans and following the completion of each audit, an internal audit report is issued containing observations and internal control weaknesses and recommendations for improvement and management. So it is a very collaborative and involved process that if something is noted, it is followed up. Also on page six of six, it talks about the focus. So... So last year, the audit did four internal audit reports with 48 recommendations, 47 for council and one for Redlands Investment Corporation. And on page six of six, you can see the areas of focus for 2425, digital transformation project, asset management framework and process, and continuing to support risk management being further embedded into governance. The chairman's annual report being presented here today confirms that the ARMC has fulfilled its responsibilities and it has contributed to the strengthened governance, transparency and accountability within council.
Thank you councillor Boglari. Do you have any speakers against? Question? Question? It's a question? Councillors, comments are really not in our standing orders, but I will allow some brief ones, please, if I can. Councillor Bishop?
Yes, thank you very much. I'd just like to acknowledge that this summary report does reflect a huge amount of work on behalf of the officers who present to this audit committee on a regular basis with very fulsome and comprehensive breakdowns of the works that operationally take place. And it's a tremendous thing to see the organisational rallying. And I thank the officers involved and our external auditors for this report.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Councillor Mitchell? Did you say you had? No. Councillor Golee?
Thanks Deputy Chair. Just as a matter of transparency, as the report states, these happen on an annual basis and they've been going for quite some time. And I know there's a lot of talk about transparency and accountability. This is actually the the rearguard, I would suggest, that actually allows us to do this on an annual basis. And it's been going on as long as I've been in council. So the public can have that assurance that this is nothing new. This is actually something we do on an annual basis every year. We're in a rock solid organisation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Golee. Councillor Boglari, do you want to sum up?
In my summing up, I was just going to say a few words like councillor Bishop just did to actually thank the external auditors, you know, for their time. They meet with us, they answer questions. Their very collaborative approach with the members of the committee. I'd also like to acknowledge that councillor Hughes was on the committee for half of this year and then I took that place and I thank councillor Hughes for all her previous work on it as well.
Thank you and I'll thank you both as well. It's a big job being on the Audit and Risk Committee. And thank you councillor Boglari for that comprehensive presentation. With that, I will put the vote. Those in favour? That is passed unanimously with Mayor Mitchell out of the room. Now we move on to the noting of the Queensland Audit Office Final Management Report. Do I have a mover and a second for 13.3 please? Moved councillor Boglari, seconded councillor Hughes. Would you like to speak to it councillor Boglari?
Happy to move this report. Under the section of the Local Government Act Regulations, we are required to present a copy of the Audit General's Observation Report at the next ordinary meeting of the local government on having received it. It is all, it is an audit to do with our finances. It's very comprehensive. There are several internal control issues and matters that have been previously reported and matters that have been dealt with are listed. Out of all of the issues, there's only one which the audit recommended that we did not accept. I would probably just, because it's written in there, it's, everything is confidential of course, but I would just like to ask the officers, even though the recommendation wasn't accepted, there would be current work still carried on with that recommendation, 24 CR14. And without accepting the recommendation, I presume we're not accepting the risks. And I'm presuming the lessons learned will still be going forward. So just for that clarity.
Just take that as a comment? Do you need?
I was just going to question, when we don't take the recommendations, do we still take the lessons learnt from it and work forward? Because that's just reassuring.
A given, but it's such a broad statement, it'd be difficult because every recommendation will be different. Is there anyone that can comment on that? Yeah, can?
Thank you Chair. You're correct. Any recommendations or risks identified by the QAA are regulated under council's risk management framework reported to or overseen by the QAO, I should say, and our Audit and Risk Management Committee. So they continue.
Thank you. That satisfies?
I'm sorry, just clarification. I threw you to legal counsel. I was referring to the fact that we're not accepting this recommendation, but we would still, for reassurance, we would still be looking at any lessons learnt or risks involved with it.
Through you Chair, correct, as I said. Any lessons learnt, issues, risks are overseen by the Audit and Risk Management Committee regularly.
Thank you. Because the report's very thorough and that was just one glitch that I think if someone was reading it, they might wonder about. Yeah, they might question it and we've got reassurance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillors, with that I'll put the motion. Those in favour? That's carried in councillor Hewlett?
Aye.
That's carried unanimously with Mayor Mitchell out of the room. Councillors, there are no reports today in 14. Sorry, I've turned it off again. There are no reports in 14 for advocacy in major projects. Moving on to 15, which is community and custard services. We have a report proposed state code for dwelling house that is a secondary dwelling. Can I have a mover and a second for the officer's recommendation at 15.1 please? Moved councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Mackenzie. Would you like to speak to it councillor Mitchell?
Yes, please Chair. I note the officer's recommendation is to authorize group manager to make a submission on the state government's draft, that dwelling draft code for dwelling house that is a secondary dwelling and the submission be presented. My comments and statements are, the detail within the submission is very important, but we're all conscious of the housing crisis. We're all conscious that homeowners may want to realise ambitions of of having secondary dwellings on their property for family or otherwise. And in fact, the state now says secondary dwellings, you don't have to have related persons in those. So that's a really important change. So we're, this council, and well, I can't speak on behalf of all other councils across Queensland. I know that most councils are very interested in helping to solve both the housing crisis but also open up opportunities. And so we're very grateful to have the state listen to those concerns and work with our council but also all councils. We can't have codes or legislation that leave gaping holes for unintended consequences while we're trying to make improvements. And I think in the submission, it recognises the positives but also highlights what we would consider some pretty gaping holes or poorly written legislation that may indeed open up some of those problems. And those consequences will come to your backyard. So that's the problem and therefore it will come to us. So as your representatives, we're not saying that this is a bad thing. We're saying it's a great thing, but it needs to be done right. And at the moment, we're not comfortable that everything has been done right. So, and one thing in particular is the secondary dwellings, the way it's written, may indeed be significantly larger than the primary dwelling. And that won't be wrong in every situation either. But there is not enough robustness and clarity around the code as it's written. So we'd add like to reiterate that this council is very happy and ready to work with state officers and state government in getting this right. And we hope that that will indeed be the case or the unintended consequences will come back to haunt all of us and our backyards. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. And we have officers in the room, so I'm going to ask an officer to present an overview, please.
Thank you councillor Talty. So yeah, just building on what councillor Mitchell mentioned there. Obviously, these changes were sort of triggered at the end of 2022 when the state government made changes to the planning regulation to enable secondary dwellings, also known as granny flats, to be rented to separate households. So prior to these changes coming to effect, the occupants of the primary dwelling and the secondary dwelling had to be part of the one household. The changes to the regulation did create challenges for council because it was done without consultation prior. So the good thing to say about the current process is that they have released a draft for council to provide comment on. As councillor Mitchell mentioned, this is really about finessing it and making sure we don't create holes that lead to adverse consequences. So, yeah, given that the changes that were made at that time, council subsequently at its general meeting on 13th of September 2023, considered a report on secondary dwellings and resolved to pick up some of those holes by adopting an updated amenity and aesthetics policy and guideline to introduce provisions to regulate secondary dwellings. It also proposes to adopt an updated infrastructure charges resolution to introduce charges for secondary dwellings. And it also sought to commence a major amendment to give permanent effect to those provisions I mentioned earlier in the guideline. So now we come to the review of the proposed secondary dwelling state code and the key points that are raised in council submission. So the first, and these are taken from the report itself and these key actions are really in those text boxes. So the first one is to review the definition of a secondary dwelling to ensure it is easily distinguishable from a dual occupancy. And it's officer's contention that a secondary dwelling should always be small in scale irrespective of the size of the primary dwelling. Now councillor Mitchell alluded to this earlier, but currently we have a definition which talks about secondary dwellings being used in conjunction with and subordinate to the dwelling house. Now, the reason this is potentially problematic is that those terms by their nature are subjective. The officer recommendation talks about establishing clear parameters linking to, in the definition of the regulation, two sizes. Because the challenge is going to be, and this potentially come about during assessment, that if we're making a judgment on what is subordinate to the dwelling house, that could be a difference of one metre squared. If we have very large dwelling houses and the secondary dwelling is subordinate to but only minor change, we think for all intents and purposes that is a dual occupancy. And as such, the submission seeks to provide that clarity, to provide clear guidance around what size parameters are appropriate for a secondary dwelling. The second key action is to consider incorporating the provisions in the draft state code into updated versions of the Queensland Development Code mandatory part 1.1 and 1.2. So just providing a bit of context there. So at the same time as we're providing feedback on the draft state code for secondary dwellings, there is also, the state has also demonstrated an intention to review QDC mandatory part 1.1 and 1.2 and to amalgamate those essentially into a new state code called the Queensland Housing Code. Now, I mentioned earlier that secondary dwelling forms part of the definition of a dwelling house. For us, it does not make sense to have two separate codes sitting, you know, away from one another. We believe they should be merged together to further avoid, you know, inconsistency between those codes. So that is the basis for making that recommendation. The third action is to clearly articulate how the provisions will apply where an existing dwelling is retained as the secondary dwelling. Now, in most instances, a secondary dwelling is going to be built and the existing dwelling house would be retained as a dwelling house. However, it is possible that a development proponent could establish a new structure and propose to have the existing dwelling house converted and become the secondary dwelling. We think the state needs to provide additional clarity around, you know, when that can occur and how it can be facilitated because currently it's silent and it's unclear which assessment provisions would apply in those circumstances. Would it be the Queensland Housing Code? Would it be the secondary dwelling state code? The third one is to provide further advice to local governments relating to assessment pathways for the state code, or yeah, the secondary dwelling state code. So as I mentioned before, if we have two separate state codes, we can potentially have two different assessment managers and we can potentially have different referrals being triggered, for example, for setbacks, building heights, site cover and the like. So again, that reiterates the value of potentially merging these together. And this is a view that's shared collectively amongst many LGAs that there is benefit in doing that. So they are the, that's a high level overview of the key changes which are, I guess, proposed to be made in our submission. There's further detailed and nuanced comments provided in attachment to of the report, but I'll just provide that at the moment and see if there are any further questions.
Thank you. Councillors, I am going to stay with standing orders. Do we have a speaker against? Do we have questions? Genuine questions? Councillor Boglari?
Thank you Dean. I think this goes on, and I really appreciate the work the officers have done because if these changes go through, there will be significant impacts on our suburbs and Redlands. So, yeah, thank you. And rereading, I know you've given us workshops, but rereading it again, it brings home the importance of planning and getting it right. So thank you. In the next agenda item, but it relates to this as well. It says through the distinctly Queensland Design Series Project, the state government is committed to reviewing the QDC and developing a secondary dwelling state code. With this review of the QDC, you've mentioned it now with these changes. Are they going to do a complete change or only the changes relating to these parts? And if it is a complete change timeline, and do we get a opportunity to actually input for that as well? Or is it only on these items at the moment?
Yeah, just for further context, so the existing Queensland Development Code was established in 2009, 2010. So it is quite outdated and council has advocated for several years to have it updated. So it's a good thing state's committed to doing it. So it, the Queensland QDC MP 1.1 and 1.2 are proposed to become a new state code called the Queensland Housing Code. They are still, so they are still working on that piece of legislation. And we understand in due course, they will make it available for local government to provide further comment, including the broader community. So they are touching base behind the scenes on that. But it's my understanding that they do intend to undertake further broader public consultation with the community at a future date in time. I unfortunately can't give you the exact timeframes and it's probably been thrown a little bit up in the air with the change of government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had a question councillor Bishop?
Yes, mine was along similar lines actually, but first of all, I want to also acknowledge. No, firstly, I want to acknowledge very much the in-depth work that has been taken place. As mentioned, this was a discussion, a decision that was made without any consultation. And so my question relates to when we, our community hasn't necessarily had a chance to comment on this. And as councillor Mitchell and councillor Boglari have mentioned, they're the ones who will be affected and impacted. Is there an opportunity for us through the Chair in our city plan review to consider any of these elements as potential matters for consultation with our community? I know the timing of that is something that we may need to consider. But if so, is there something that we could institute in our city plan preparation to help mitigate and reinforce the very good work that officers have done?
Thank you councillor Bishop. I think the answer is yes.
Yeah, look, I think the issue here is going to be one of timing. So my understanding is based on the current timeline. The current state code is probably going to take effect prior to consultation commencing on a new city plan, if that is what council chooses to do. But there is always an opportunity as part of city plan while we're out engaging with the community and talking about planning to provide some additional information regarding secondary dwellings and what it means for, you know, the mum and dad, property developer that potentially want to consider putting something like this in their backyard. So there is an opportunity to do that and I'm sure City Plan Coordinator will be happy to facilitate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just acknowledging that this does provide an opportunity for diversity in the city, which is welcome as well. So looking at the positives and the negatives, it's a useful. So looking at the positives and the negatives, it's a, it's a useful report. Thank you.
Is it a question councillor Colley? A question?
Yeah, following on from councillor Bishop's question, would you be able to provide a little bit of context for us around maybe the assessment hierarchy when it comes to state regulation like this and what we can actually implement in our city plan that may influence or maybe give us a little bit more discretionary power?
That is a good question councillor Golly, because one point that I hadn't mentioned relates to alternative provisions. So essentially, the way that these state codes work, oh, you know, right now it's open for discussion as to how they work. Will they, will there be a mandatory code that applies in all instances? Or will council have discretion to amend certain elements of the state code to make it contextually appropriate? And if that doesn't make sense, I'll try to frame it with a practical example. If a state code is brought into effect and every component is mandatory, that means all those provisions, as they're currently framed, exist for all council, and there's no recognition of the unique contextual circumstances of a, you know, a metropolitan LGA compared to one in far north Queensland, right? So part, another element of council submission is that it is requesting the state to consider providing scope for alternative assessment provisions so that local governments can finesse the provisions and come up with provisions that are contextually appropriate. So we talk about things like setbacks and site cover. In this city, for example, in the low density residential zone, we have specific precincts, LDR1 and LDR2, where we seek to protect larger lot sizes. To protect the amenity of those areas, we would generally seek to have larger setbacks. What, if the state code is brought into effect as currently proposed, the ability for council to protect the amenity of those areas and, and the unique contextual circumstances, other things might be, you know, building heights, site cover and the like, is undermined. So council, so another component of council submission is, you know, these provisions are intended to apply by default. So if a council does not have any provisions in its planning scheme, these will apply by default. In the same way, if we don't trigger a dwelling house against the low density residential zone code currently, the Queensland Development Code applies by default. But the Queensland Development Code, right now, you know, we have alternative assessment provisions in city plan. So while the nominal site cover standard is 50%, we do have variances in parts of the city like Point Lookout. So part of our provision or submission to the state would be, we think it's a good idea to have default settings, that's great. However, providing additional scope for council to massage those and make those contextually appropriate is a good idea because a one, it's, we don't think a one size fits all approach is going to work. Yeah.
Thank you, and appreciate the, the level of detail that you've provided with your response.
Thank you. Councillors, is that all your questions? Right, with that, summing up councillor Mitchell?
I think in the face of such a wonderful summary, my summing up will fall somewhat short, but I'll have a quick go. Councils, we're here to help, and the importance of this isn't lost on this council and every other council. What I'm hearing is the, the finesse through cooperation that hopefully will come about. Are those default settings that are robust and appropriate across all Queensland LGAs? But we're hopeful that the state may then allow that secondary head of power with those alternative provisions that allow for some local government context, not only here in Redlands, but also perhaps across Queensland. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, without a put the vote, those in favour, that's unanimous with councillor...
Aye.
With mayor Mitchell out of the room. Thank you. We're moving on now to 15.2, the Redland housing strategy, and I will ask an officer to present, but I'll get a mover and a second or first. So councillor Boglari moving, councillor Mackenzie seconding. Would you like to speak to it before we ask the officer councillor Boglari?
Oh, I think if the officer can present because it follows on exactly from the last one, and the importance of this housing strategy certainly isn't lost on us either.
Thank you, if you would, Dean. Thank you.
Thanks for your question councillor. So yeah, the Redland housing strategy, you may recall, yeah, the state government chose to prepare this strategy on our behalf, and the intended purpose was to facilitate increased housing diversity across Redland City. A draft strategy was formulated, it was released to the community for public comment. Council subsequently considered a report in relation to the draft housing strategy, and it resolved to make a submission. A number, well, the vast majority of comments made by officers during the submission period have been considered by the state government, and they are reflected in the final housing strategy. So they have finessed the housing strategy, in particular, the implementation plan at the back end. I think they had 26 implementation actions in the draft strategy, and key problem was, you know, how they would practically be delivered as well as sequence. So they have refined that list, there's now 18 implementation actions, and the particular officer comments regarding each of those actions are articulated in attachment four. So of the 18 implementation actions, council agree, oh sorry, the officer recommendation is that we would support those either in whole or in part, and some of them we would request further information and potentially require additional resources from the state government to deliver. For example, undertaking a review of the dwelling capacity on the Southern Mount Balance. There are only two particular actions in the implementation plan which we have a concern with. One, the first one being, there's a recommendation for council to establish an incentives policy to facilitate smaller scale housing topologies. Now, council has already established an affordable housing policy, that's targeted at community housing providers delivering affordable housing. I guess the concern here from officers is that under the current cap charge infrastructure framework, council already has a limited capacity to recover funding through its infrastructure charges, and they don't cover the basic costs. So that framework does undermine the long-term financial sustainability of council. So for the state then to request for council to additionally, essentially either request rate payers or through debt to further facilitate this development is potentially a step too far. The other action which officers denote support is in relation to the Kwanmaa Mooka TLPI. So while at a high level, council supports the intent of the Kwanmaa Mooka TLPI, so not to be mistaken there, the means by which that's given effect need to really be initiated by the state government. The state government reached an agreement with the Kwanmaa Mooka people to facilitate the land use outcomes and development opportunities on the island. We were party to a consultation process on that TLPI, and essentially at the end of the consultation period, there are a lot of questions that came from the community asking for the state to justify how it had reached a position that particular parcels of land should be rezoned for, for example, residential, commercial, industrial purposes. Council subsequently issued a pause notice to the state government and requested that information, and to date, that information has not been provided. So for council now to progress an amendment which, in its mind, there is still outstanding information required from the state, would not be considered appropriate, and that is why the officer recommendation is not to proceed with that particular action.
Yeah, so you're, you are the mover?
Yeah.
I'll just go to speakers against first and then come back to questions if I can. Are there any speakers against? Okay, so yes, councillor Boglari, your question?
Thank you, through the chair. When I'm reading this, a lot of it has got to request the state government to approve different amendment packages, some of which have been sitting with them for two years, and for these to go into our city plan now. My concern is that maybe some of that now is even outdated. And we're about to commence a revision of our city plan. So if these resources here are going to be used now to put them in, because I know that usually takes a good six to 12 months for that to happen, once it comes back to us anyway, how's that going to impact the revision of our city plan? And is it even efficient now to do that? Though I know residents are waiting for that, you know, some residents are waiting for those changes. And would this mean when we put the major amendment package in, it was two years ago, I can't quite remember, is the design code for that area, which to me was the important thing, it should have gone into the city plan initially, is that included to go in? Because that did twix. And one more, the actual implications financially and responsibility wise to council if that TLPI does go into our city plan, not really being our plan, and then I feel we're going to own it if it goes in there, and it could be another cost shifting. And community consultation, there's going to be a lot of changes here happening to our city plan, and normally we do community consultation, whereas now I'm feeling the way this process has happened, these changes are going to happen, impacts on our community, and there's been none to limited consultation on many of the aspects. So how do we do community consultation on it as well?
Thank you, Dean, and I think that reflects the hierarchy of state being clear that they can impose these things and we can't really argue, but please, whatever you can add.
Yeah, there were a few questions there. So the first one is in relation to amendments which were, I guess, presented to the state for state interest review over several years. So there are, there are a number of packages that fall into this boat, and one of them, MDR, the medium density residential zone code amendment, I think has been sitting with them for a number of years. So recognizing that that was an amendment package endorsed by a former council, there is inbuilt flexibility in the system in that if the minister were to approve that in its whole, in its current form, it would be returned to council, and then council would have an opportunity to, I guess, determine whether it would go to consultation. So we've, we presented it several years ago, said, do we have permission to go to consultation? If they come back to us, we then have another decision point as to whether we would, you know, like to do that or not. So there is an inbuilt mechanism to, for council to reevaluate its position in regard to those amendments. The MDR amendment too, you alluded to, you know, there's parts of the amendment packages we presented to the state that have been reflected in their implementation plan. So that tells me the state government, they haven't signed off on that, they support, at least in part, some of the amendment packages. So that's a good sign. The issue though is that they haven't given us full approval through, through that to commence the entirety of the amendment. So we have been in discussions with the officers from the SARAH team, and the next step in the process is we've asked them to go back and review whether there are any outstanding matters in those amendment packages, recognizing the reason really that they had them on hold was to finalize the housing strategy. That's now been done. So now the housing strategy is finalized, they said they didn't want to have, you know, inconsistency between the two. Now that's been done. We've asked, can you go back and review and advise us and come back to us? So that, I think, will identify any, any teething issues there may be, and obviously council can choose to pull parts of that amendment package if it chooses not to. The third question was in relation to the TLPI. Yeah, so there has been very limited consultation with the broader community on the temporary local planning instrument, and that's potentially why we had such significant interest in the consultation period that was undertaken. I was party to it, but was assisting the state government, and I think we received something like 500 submissions, I can't recall the exact number. So there is a lot of interest in the community about it, but it sort of hit a standstill when we requested the state for additional information. I don't know what the best process is moving forward, really, the ball's in the state government's court, but we have a new state government, and we don't know necessarily how they intend to progress it, but it's certainly something, you know, we're proposing, the officer recommendation is that we go back to the state government and say, we do not support council leading this amendment process without a direction from the planning minister to do so. That's our position. Yeah, and we'll see what the response is to that proposal if the recommendations are adopted and endorsed by council.
Thank you very much for all that clarity, and thank you for all these points, including this seven stories, which I don't like either. So thank you very much to all the officers.
Thank you. Councillor Bishop, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. First of all, I agree, there's many things going on for our community, and lots of changes that have come about in a rather ad hoc way. So I would encourage some consultation supported through our city plan process. My question relates to item 17, which is that development of an incentives policy mechanism, including both land use and infrastructure incentives, for the delivery of the above alternative housing typologies or housing models or similar within the city such as, and it lists a range of different types of responses that are happening in other places that might be important in the future. I agree with the fact that we have a certain amount of money that we've applied to incentives for affordable homes. I wonder if there is an opportunity for us to develop something along the lines of a guideline to consider, consider and even encourage innovative new models that are being explored. And I'll use the example of something that I was sent just last week, which is what can Australia learn from European affordable cooperative rental housing models in Europe?
Councillor, I'm just wondering if that's a bit too broad?
A question specifically to this.
And could you ask specifically of the officer something he can answer, because he hasn't got that document?
No, I haven't, I haven't shared that document, I've asked for permission just to share the document.
Yep.
But I think there will be innovative new options coming up. Is there some way that we might be able to develop something along the lines of our guidelines for amenity and aesthetics, that we might be able to look at appropriate Redland based innovations that could actually address suitable criteria going forward? It might still accord with what the state is asking, but not be a financial incentive, but more of a, more of a guideline, just to encourage that sort of behaviour.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if that's more of a comment than a question.
It's a question to see if there's something that we...
I'm not sure the officer can answer that right now.
If that's something that we can integrate.
And it's not directly related to the item in front of us. I'll give the officer an opportunity to add if he feels he has anything to add.
So it's my general view that the city plan does facilitate these types of development in the right zone. And equally, through the affordable housing policy, council could support through an incentives mechanism, the delivery of those housing products if they're delivered by a community housing provider. The issue here is that if we were, if council were to adopt an incentives policy that's just based on the housing typology and not link it to a community housing provider, you could potentially be subsidizing a development proponent that absorbs any money committed by council and then sells the product for the same price as otherwise would have, or he or she would have. So that's, that's the bit that I think there's disconnect there. And the other thing is, build to rent isn't a housing typology. That's a way in which that housing is funded. So it really falls outside the remit of the city plan anyway. So yeah, so just to answer your question, I think city plan does facilitate these housing typologies. The whole intent of the housing strategy was to review where alternative housing typologies can be supported, and there's a number of proposals, including supporting smaller lot sizes referenced here, for example, in the LMDR zone, down to 250 square metres. So other parts of the strategy do that. I think city plan, for most part, can provide for these housing typologies and are really ticking off on that, that component.
Great, it's really the discussion that I'd be interested in, and I'll follow up with about that later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving to councillor Hughes, then councillor Mitchell?
Thank you, deputy mayor. On page 76 of the report, there's a comment here, the state government must review and amend the capped infrastructure charges system, da, 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 da. And then how the feedback was addressed in this final report, the state government has not committed to reviewing the capped infrastructure charges system. And for myself, that's just an enormous red flag. We've been talking about this for a long, long time, many, many years. I think it's kicked up to LGAQ advocating...
Councillor, is there a question?
...on our behalf. So when we see this, Dean, how have we responded back to the state? Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess the submission that was made on the draft Redlands housing strategy was that as part, as part of the broader package of initiatives to support the delivery of affordable housing, the state government should commit to do that. The summary in the table says, while we made that submission, the state government has not made that commitment. I guess all we can really do is continue to advocate that through various channels, as you mentioned, LGAQ and other forums. But we can't really make them do it, it has to be a decision they take. And obviously, in the midst of a housing crisis, increasing the cost of delivering housing, which, you know, is, obviously, it's a challenge. You know, it's a difficult decision, would be a difficult decision for the government to make. So nonetheless, from a local government perspective, it's really about long-term financial sustainability. Because if council cannot recover the cost of delivering the infrastructure, it either has to peel back on delivering it and that has consequences for housing delivery or it has to go in increasing levels of debt or charge increased rates. And then there's a question about equity, is that the right way to do it? So yeah, it's not a, there's no easy answer to it, unfortunately.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Mitchell, you have a question?
I do have a question and I'll frame it up with a little indulgent, but there is a question. I want to frame it up by saying a housing strategy isn't just about building boxes, it's actually about delivering livable and safe communities and opportunity to people. With that in mind, to me, the infrastructure delivery is the critical, or lack thereof, is the key portion. So it might be unfair the question through to you, Dean, but I'm happy for other GMs to step in. With the lack of South East Queensland Infrastructure Plan and funding and budgeting attached, compounded by capped infrastructure charges that see councils affordability for delivering of the infrastructure going backwards at an incredibly fast rate, we're in a catch twenty-two, we being local government. So I was just wanting to, and I'm hopeful moving forward and the cooperation with the state that we'll avoid that. My question is through to you, but maybe a bit unfair to frame this up. What might be the consequences with no change to those infrastructure provisions to the livability or safety of communities and the cost to council in doing that, particularly in somewhere like the TLPI, but really anywhere across our city? I know it's a big question, but.
Yeah, no, but it is a good question. And it does have an adverse impact on livability. So if we do not upgrade our infrastructure networks and we continue to respond to the South East Queensland Infrastructure Plan by accommodating increasing levels of growth, we get increasing levels of congestion, increased car dependency, overutilisation of existing assets like hospitals and the like. So always the rhetoric coming out of council has been, well, I'm paraphrasing here and not everyone's going to agree with this, but we can, we can take on additional growth in this city. But state government, you need to play your part in funding the necessary upgrades to the infrastructure to ensure that livability isn't adversely impacted. We can't just keep cramming them in and not upgrading the roads and building new hospitals and building new schools and upgrading the wastewater treatment plants. It doesn't work. So that's really what we've been advocating for through SECP, so the South East Queensland Infrastructure Plan, to see more money allocated to the key infrastructure that not only supports livability now, but also unlocks future growth in the city. We don't have wastewater treatment plants to treat the affluent, we can't accommodate more growth. So we do need to upgrade those facilities, that's simple as it is, yeah.
Thank you. We're good. Moving councillor Colley, you have a question on being somewhat indulgent here, councillors, with framing up, but can we keep it to questions?
No, I do have legitimate questions. Certainly share the concerns of councillor Hughes and councillor Mitchell, which they've shared around the capped infrastructure charges. But also a little bit of a concern around the response to facilitating growth and the capacity of the southern Moreton Bay Islands. That's obviously going to come with additional infrastructure requirements as well. My question is about the timing of our response to the release of the Redlands Housing Strategy. We've obviously had a change of government, this strategy was released prior to the change of government. What's the expectation of any appetite maybe from a new government to make changes or further amendments or maybe even a review of the housing strategy?
Thanks councillor Colley. Unfortunately, yeah, I haven't had any touchpoints with the new government yet to understand their general position on, you know, the housing strategy and other policy that was in train under the former government. Yeah, southern Moreton Bay Islands, the one you referenced, has always been, it's a challenging environment to work in. And the previous state government had not really been willing to review dwelling capacity on the island. In fact, it enacted a piece of legislation which specifically protected development entitlements for, I think it was a period of ten years. So it was an interesting change in position from the former state government to include this as an implementation action in the housing strategy. Nonetheless, it is one we think's important, but it's not one that we as a council can deliver on by ourselves. The history of the islands, as you know, is that it was undertaken subdivision by a state government previously. And then it was handed back to local government and we inherited a lot of the challenges that continue to this day. So we would like to work with the state government to resolve those challenges. And the recommendation from officers is that you commit to resources, might be funding or in kind through officer, to undertake this exercise and, you know, come to head on some of these challenges that have been persistent for so long.
Thank you. Councillors, if that has answered all of your questions, I'll move back to councillor Boglari if she would like to sum up.
No, I just like, again, thanks to the officers for all their clarity on this matter. It's highly important and I hope the residents of Redlands realise that we're very much dictated in some instances by the state government.
Thank you, and with that, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Councillor Hewitt?
Aye.
That's passed unanimously with Mayor Mitchell out of the room. Councillors, we have no reports from infrastructure operations at sixteen. I'm not aware of any notices of intention to repeal or amend at seventeen. I've not been advised of any notice of motion at eighteen. Councillors, if we have no urgent business. Now, we have a number of confidential items, but I'm not sure that we need to move into confidential. Can I just have an indication if anybody feels the need to move into confidential? They do, okay. So with that, I'll need a mover and a seconded to move into confidential, moved by councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Mackenzie, all those in favour?
Aye.
That's approved unanimously with Mayor Mitchell out of the room. So we will take a moment.
Cameras just coming on councillors, just be aware. You might want to turn the other room on.
Yeah.
Okay, with that councillors, can I have a move in a second to the move out of confidential and into general meeting that was moved by councillor Bishop, seconded by councillor Golly. Can I have a show of hands, those in support, councillor Hewlett?
Aye.
That's carried unanimously with mayor Mitchell out of the room. Now that we are back on the public record, I'd like to acknowledge that Amanda Daly, our head of HR, has joined us and we thank her for that. And note, is this your last? It is her last general meeting today and we're very sad about that. And we'll ask her to go to the recognition of achievement part of the meeting in the recording because we have had a few words about that already today. So, thank you. Now councillors, running through the confidential items list, if I can, can I have a move in a second to the 20.1, the Coswick class action for noting, moved councillor Coley, seconded councillor Bishop, all those in favour?
Aye.
That's unanimous with mayor Mitchell out of the room. Disposal of land by grant of lease, 20.4, moved councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Boglari, all those in favour?
Aye.
That's unanimous with mayor Mitchell out of the room. 20.5, Transleck Dunwich ferry terminal upgrade project.
Cameras just coming on councillors, just be aware. Okay with that councillors, can I have a move in a seconded and a move out of confidential and into a general meeting that was moved by councillor Bishop, seconded by councillor Golly. Can I have a show of hands, those in support? Councillor Hewlett.
Aye.
That's carried unanimously with Mayor Mitchell out of the room. Now that we are back on the public record, I'd like to acknowledge that Amanda Daly, our head of HR, has joined us and we thank her for that. And note, is this your last? It is her last general meeting today and we're very sad about that. And we'll ask her to go to the recognition of achievement part of the meeting and the recording because we have had a few words about that already today. So, thank you. Now councillors, running through the confidential items list, if I can, can I have a move in a seconded for 20.1, the Coswick class action for noting? Moved councillor Coley, seconded councillor Bishop, all those in favour?
Aye.
That's unanimous with Mayor Mitchell out of the room. Item 20.2, Redland Investment Corporation business plan and budget for noting, moved councillor Rendell's, seconded councillor Mitchell, all those in favour?
Aye.
That's unanimous with Mayor Mitchell out of the room. 20.3 dedication of land as road and disposal of land, Russell Island, moved councillor Rendell's, seconded councillor Mackenzie, all those in favour?
Aye.
That's unanimous with Mayor Mitchell out of the room. Disposal of land by grant of lease, 20.4, moved councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Boglari, all those in favour?
Aye.
That's unanimous with Mayor Mitchell out of the room. 20.5, Transact Dunwich Ferry Terminal upgrade project, as amended, well, yes, we have an amended motion on the screen, moved by councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Bishop, all those in favour of it as appears on the screen, that's unanimous. Councillor Hewlett.
Aye.
Unanimous with Mayor Mitchell out of the room. The Kenross Road upgrade proposed infrastructure agreement, moved councillor Mackenzie, seconded councillor Hughes, all those in favour?
Aye.
That's unanimous with Mayor Mitchell out of the room. Councillors, with that, I believe we have finished our meeting and I declare it closed at 12.13pm. Thank you very much everybody and have a good afternoon.